Chairperson Blazer.
Here.
Alder Austin.
Here.
Lee Tao. Abelson, Eric Daven.
Here.
Ben Gudrow.
Here.
That is excused. Jeff Maroots.
All right.
That is five. We have a quorum.
Sounds good. Thank you. First item on our agenda is to, is the approval of the reports, reports from July 6th and July 20th Plan Commission meeting. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
So motion by Austin, second by Daven. Any questions, comments, clarifications on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item two, which is 23-000524 Badger Land Survey LLC. Request for a certified survey map to create two lots from three at 1431 Second Street North, parcel ID 3405492, and dedicate right-of-way on First Street North. Yeah?
Thank you. So this request, as you stated, Mayor, is to take three lots and make two. The request is before Plan Commission because there is a three-foot dedication along First Street North. Typically, this would be an internal review, but because of that dedication, it requires action by Plan Commission and Common Council. They are basically taking three lots and making it into two, which is less non-conforming. So the lots currently under the current zoning district are non-conforming, but they're decreasing the non-conformity with the current lot configuration with two. They're also separating the commercial building and meeting the setback requirements for that commercial building. With that being said, we would recommend approval.
Any questions or comments?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve Plan 23-524 as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval of the item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item 23-00535 Wisconsin Rapids 4540 A Street South, Wisconsin LLC. Request for a certified survey map to create three lots from two at 4540 A Street South and 710 Ruby Avenue, parcel ID 3414195 and 3414178, and dedicate right-of-way on A Street South. Steph?
Thank you, Mayor. A very similar situation here. We have a request to perform some lot line adjustments and create a new lot out of two lots with a total of three lots. The dedication that's required in this case is on Eighth Street South, and it varies from about 12 to, I think about 12, 12.8 feet along that right-of-way. Again, any dedication has to go to Plan Commission and Common Council for review and approval. With regards to the lots, they all meet the lot size requirements. And the, just note that part of this was to permit a potential user to put an addition on the back of an existing building. So this lot configuration also permits them, the area, to be able to do that. We will recommend approval, similar to the last request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, what are your wishes? Thank you. I'll second that motion. So the motion is second to approve this item. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion also carries. We are on to item four, 23-000679 TAM acquisitions. Request for a certified survey map to create two lots from one at 2730 A Street South, parcel ID 3412599, and dedicate right-of-way on A Street South and Grove Avenue. Yeah?
Thank you. Again, this item pertains to another request later in the agenda regarding a new development site. And so there's an existing lot of record here on Eighth Street South. They've asked to split this existing lot and in doing so, create a second lot for the development later to be reviewed on the agenda. And they've also cleaned up some non-conformities with the northern lot line that currently crosses the building. From a zoning standpoint, this meets the lot requirements. And obviously, again, it's before the Plan Commission and Common Council eventually. Because of the dedication along Eighth Street South, we are recommending approval of this CSM and that dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve Plan 23-000679, subject to staff recommendations.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the plan. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion also carries. We're on to item five, which is 23-000516. Ron and Diane Plume? Pollam? Okay, thank you. Request for a special exception to exceed the floor plan area, or the floor area of an attached garage maximum in the mixed residential R2 district at 4410 Ridgeview Lane, parcel ID 3414540. Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Blazer and members of the commission. So as the mayor said, this is a special exception request to exceed the floor area requirement of an attached garage in the R2 mixed residential district. Just for some background on this proposal, the applicant is proposing to build a new home at 4410 Ridgeview Lane. Their intent is to construct a 1,786 square foot home and then a 1,268 square foot attached garage. And the way our R2 dimensional standards are laid out, attached garages are limited to 50% of the ground floor living area in the R2 mixed residential district. However, the Planning Commission may allow a special exception to exceed that 50%, provided the floor area over 50% is deducted from the allowable floor area of the detached, of any future detached accessory buildings. So again, this proposal is to construct an attached garage that is 71% of that ground floor living area. The reasons for these types of standards typically is, is kind of aesthetic in nature to make sure the residential portion of the home dominates the, the look of it, the feel of it in residential neighborhoods. A few decades ago, there was a push where garage, garages became the predominant feature of homes. And so this standard just helps with the, so that the allocation lends itself to more of a traditional residential neighborhood. So looking at the standards of review for a special exception, the size of the property is consistent with others in the area. This proposal is in keeping with the overall intent of the chapter. The home is located within a development that is privately regulated and does not permit accessory structures. The ridges, codes and covenants do not permit any detached structures at all. And so this wouldn't, this deduction from any future accessory structures wouldn't apply or be necessary in this case. And this attached garage really is the only opportunity of this applicant to have, you know, a garage or what would typically be included in an, in an accessory structure. There are no anticipated impacts to the natural environment. The proposal's consistent with the neighborhood and community maintaining a community-oriented facade while meeting the garage needs of the applicant. So as staff, we feel like this is a, a good reason to apply this special exception standard. The home has a, you know, inviting feel. The, the garage isn't overly dominant anymore so than in other homes in the area. And we would, we would recommend approval in this case, and I'll turn it over to the commission.
Thank you, Carrie. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just had a question on the, when the square footage is figured. I see the large garage space to the north, but then to the south, there's a little storage area that's not included in the home. Is that part of the figured garage space?
So which, which area is that? Oh, I see. I see where you're saying, on the, on the far side, the side away from the garage?
Yeah.
So that would be part of the residence itself.
Okay.
That storage area. So that was calculated in that livable area.
Any other questions? I think it's a beautiful design. You can never have enough garage space. I think it looks, it's well laid out, and I think it'll look perfect in that area. I'll make a motion to approve the plan, which is 23-00516.
Second.
Going to have to arm wrestle for that one. It was pretty tight. We have a motion and a second to approve the plan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. Congratulations. We are on to item six, which is 23-000658 Marshfield Clinic. Request for an amendment to a previous site plan review to modify the site configuration at 220 and 440 24th Street South, parcel ID 3410784. Yeah?
The request before you is by Marshfield Clinic. As indicated, they recently received a site plan review approval with their new building back in 2022. They've since finished that building and are nearing final occupancy of that structure. But they do have a, a few requests to clarify some of the impervious surface on the site, and that has such triggered a, an amendment to that previous site plan review. Summarize before you are those changes. One involves the MRI parking pad area, which is shifted a little bit more. They looked to, they look to install an emergency helicopter landing pad. And then the plan previously identified some changes to their main access aisle. They look to keep that access aisle unchanged moving forward. Again, all of this factored into the overall impervious surface, site plan requirements, landscaping requirements that were originally figured and are, again, are described a little bit further here and on the, on the presentation above. With regards to those standards, they are met. They do have, as far as landscaping goes, an abundance of parking lot landscaping over the amount is, in addition to the amount that would be required with this additional impervious surface. So they wouldn't necessarily have to address any additional landscaping related to these impervious surface requirements. Some photos here of, of where the improvements are being made. And again, there, there is no architectural review. No lighting is proposed to change. Ingress egress remains the same. It's really just that additional impervious surface. We would recommend approval, subject to obtaining any additional permits and/or that staff would have the ability to approve minor modifications to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Commission, any questions or comments?
I just have a question about the helicopter pad. Is that that, I guess I'm looking on page 45 of 112 of the staff report. It's kind of got an arrow pointing towards a small pad there. Is that to be denoted that it's the entire dashed line around that or just that small checkered box as well?
Yeah, it's, it's just the small checkered box there. I believe it's 25 by 25.
Okay.
At least that's the impervious surface area that's proposed to be added. I do know that there are members from Marshfield Clinic on the call as well on Zoom. Mayor, if you wanted to entertain any additional comment?
Yeah, I just have a question about in regards to how often they anticipate helicopter landings. I see it's indicated as an emergency landing spot, so I guess I kind of interpret that as a very, very infrequent.
This is Tracy Trout. I, I can just speculate. It would be a kind of an Easter and Christmas type event. We are not a trauma center in Wisconsin Rapids, but we can't prevent if somebody walks in that is higher acuity than can be handled at the, the facility. So they would be med flighted out in, in the absolute urgent, you know, dire situation. So I, I don't think this is a, even a once a month or once a quarter thing. But it, it is subjected to, to, if somebody walks through the doors, we have to take care of them. And if their acuity is higher than we can handle, that's really the reason for this.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, I guess it sheds light on a little bit of it, but obviously operations change. So I just want to look long-term at a sustainable solution if this does become a reoccurring thing. I know we have a, another hospital in town that's frequently using an adjacent area.
Yes, and all of the ambulance services, they will be definitely very aware. We, we won't be able to take high-acuity cases and should be routed to the nearest trauma center, which we are not here in Rapids.
Thanks.
I, I just had a question on, is there, maybe Kyle can answer. Is there anything in our, I guess, documents about neighboring properties or helicopter landings or on the property line of like concern or, you know, the debris flying or, you know, are they just thinking of damaged other properties if they're close to that property line, if there's anything that we have?
I, I'm actually glad somebody asked that because our initial thought was to just use what, what's there for, as a paved area. But once we had our pilot come out and look, he said that where we have that asphalt currently backed by the ambulance drop-off, he thought it was too close to the, the adjacent property. And that's why he suggested the location where it's being proposed. That concrete pad is, is offset and further away from the neighboring building.
Thank you.
To elaborate further on that, with regards to the city's ordinance, we don't technically define a helicopter landing pad in zoning anywhere, even in regards to the building code. Most of the time when a helipad is referenced, it's on top of a building and obviously having architectural and structural integrity, fencing, things of that nature that are required, lighting. In this case, this is really just, at least from a zoning standpoint, this has been looked at as additional impervious surface that could accommodate an emergency landing. So it'd be no different than an area cordoned off on another property that, that could, you know, land an emergency helicopter. I do also want to note that DHS does also have regulatory authority for helicopter landing pads as well. So I think those requirements, if any, subject to review and approval would, would be necessary also.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to a previous site plan review to modify the site configuration at 220 and 440 24th Street South.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item seven, which is 23-000677. Alternative Edge, request for a site plan and architectural review to construct an accessory structure at 711 Peach Street, parcel ID 3407884. Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Blazer. This is an existing retail location, and they are looking to construct an accessory structure on site for business storage purposes, a small accessory structure. So the application is for a 48-square-foot accessory structure. The existing business operates within the first-floor commercial suite. This building does include two commercial suites. The site is on B2 General Commercial District, and the retail business is a permitted use. The application is for site plan review for the detached accessory building only. It does meet all dimensional standards and architectural review standards, and there is no impact to egress, egress, ingress, egress, parking, landscaping, or to lighting. So staff, as staff, we would recommend approval with conditions, that it be placed on a stable foundation and anchored appropriately, which would be required by building permit anyway, and that applicable permits through the city shall be obtained, and then that we would have the authority, staff would have the authority to approve minor modifications to the plans. And I will turn it back over to the commission.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve with a request, 23-00067.
Thank you, along with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion also carries. We are on to item eight, which is 23-000682 Tim Randall. Request for a site plan review to construct a restaurant and drive-up service window and associated site improvements at 2730 A Street South, parcel ID 3412599. Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Blazer and members of the commission. So this is the item that Kyle referenced earlier that is contingent on the approval of the CSM, which will eventually be going to Common Council because there is public dedication. So I just want to note that. So this is a site plan review to construct a restaurant and drive-up service window, and then the associated site improvements at 2730 Eighth Street South. And it is for a restaurant, Pizza Hut restaurant, that is 1,014 square feet in size. It is for pickup and delivery orders only. It is not an inside dining kind of operation. It's the model that a lot of restaurants have gone to just in this climate. And again, there's a concurrent certified survey map in conjunction with this application. Both uses are permitted uses in the B2 General Commercial District. Cars can enter both off of Eighth, Eighth Street South or from Grove Avenue. They will circulate in a one-way flow counterclockwise, and the drive-through will also circulate in a, obviously in a one-way flow, counterclockwise. So there's parking to the north and south of the site. There is a buffer yard required because it is adjacent to residential property. And so that will include fencing and landscaping, and that is to the west. So standards of review, the use as proposed is permitted. These are the elevations that you see on the screen. Dimensional standards are met, and the use is well-suited to the lot. As staff, we feel like this is kind of a really good buffer use between the heavily-traveled A Street corridor and the residences to the west because it is more of a neighborhood restaurant. Not, you know, something where people are quickly coming and going. And the landscaping plan that's been provided is nice, and there's a really nice buffer yard provided to the west. Again, ingress and egress are provided from Eighth and Grove. There's also cross-accessibility with the lot to the north. The vehicle queuing as shown appears sufficient. The applicant has said if the orders aren't ready, the cars typically just continue to queue through. So they, they would just kind of be moving through until they're, you know, a couple minutes if it's not ready. But, I mean, until it's ready to pick up, and then they would, of course, be exiting the site. There would really be no reason for them to stay. Landscaping, the landscaping plan provided, as I said, is, is a nice landscape plan, an adequate buffer yard. The architecture, we feel like, is nice. It does meet the requirements. I see the bottom was cut off in this photo, but the full photo is included in your packet. They did provide nice detail and some enhancements with the stonework and some variability with the canopy and the metal accents. The lighting standards are met. And overall, again, we feel like it will provide a suitable transition between the A Street corridor to residence. It's kind of the two extremes in a way to go from that corridor to residences. So this is a good kind of transition, and especially with that landscaping, that heavy landscaping that'll be provided to the west. So as staff, we are recommending approval. Again, the approval's contingent on that final approval of certified survey map, which will go to council because of the public land dedication. There's a condition just, just requiring that the one-way flow of the traffic, the directional signage, provide that information. Signage permits will be separately reviewed by Community Development. What you see on those elevations is a conceptual approval, but we would need to verify dimensions and placement with sign permits. And then that right-of-way permits be obtained, stormwater permits as needed be obtained. And then again, that staff would have the ability to approve minor modifications to the plans. And I will turn it back over to the commission.
Thank you. Commission, any questions?
I just had a question on the property line to the north with the existing building. Is that going to be, do you know if it's going to be curbed by those parking stalls or just all straight-through asphalt?
It is not. Because it's an existing conjoined lot, it is not going to be curbed. It will just be continual asphalt.
Okay. And then, I had a few. Are we able to regulate? I see there's paintings for when cars exit back onto A Street, a right turn only. Is that just their suggestion or is there signage for that as well that?
So the right turn only, so there's that island, that interior island that'll direct traffic to turn right. That is not a raised median at that point on Eighth. So we, we could add a condition requiring that, but I think as it stands now, they would have the ability to turn left just because it's not a raised median.
Most likely with an A Street reconstruction, that would probably be not a median in there or?
It will be.
Or like?
It won't be raised.
It'll be just like it is?
Yep.
Okay.
At least that's, at least that's the, been the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, they, you know, they currently have a driveway at this approximate location that functions north and southbound. I think it's preferred that if you can ever alleviate cross-traffic, that that is, you know, the preferred option. So it was suggested by our city engineer to have a, a right-only exit headed southbound, and obviously the one-way coming into the site.
Okay.
I think, again, if the, the Plan Commission has concerns, you know, you could add a condition stating that proper signage be required. Also know that the applicant is on the Zoom call and could comment further on this.
No, no problem. As long as the city engineer is able to look through it. And that was just my question, too, with the crosswalk there, with the, close to that lighted crosswalk there, that there wouldn't be anything, as long as Mr. Igs had looked through it. No other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, what are your wishes? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item nine, which is a public hearing. 23-000621 City of Wisconsin Rapids. Public hearing, hearing and action on a request to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance, specifically Article 6, Division 3, Sections numbering and 11.06.65. Driveways including modifications to dimensional standards. I'll have Kyle introduce the item and then, or staff introduce the item, and then we'll open a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Blazer and members of the commission. So this item has, or this issue around driveways has come up several times in our department. And looking into it, we noticed this kind of subsidiary numbering issue, which we just thought we would include. So this one, the beginning of this should be pretty straightforward. It's just that there are several sections that are included in the text, but in the header, they're not. And so the numbering is off in the header. This is just more of a housekeeping item, but we thought this, this was nice to bring into this. So just to note that the sections noted in blue are included later in the text, but just in the heading, they're not. So we're just asking that, that we could correct that with this amendment. And then, this is more to the, to the point of, of why we're bringing this forward. So we have the way- So we have the way our ma, our residential driveway maximum width section is outlined now is if, if garage doors are more than forty feet from the right-of-way line, they have to taper to twelve feet. And that has to happen beginning eight feet, at least eight feet from the, from the property line, basically. And if they're closer than forty feet, they can be thirty feet if, if the driveway is closer than that. So we don't have a lot of situations where this applies, but when it does, we have run into quite a few times. People feeling that the twelve feet is quite narrow for a residential driveway. And then that, you know, if they want to extend to the thirty feet, they can do so in eight feet, which seems a little strange that just that first eight feet has to be twelve feet in width. So then they end up with kind of a cutout in that first eight feet that goes from twelve to thirty. So we're, just to simplify it, we did look at a, at a lot of surrounding communities and typically they are twenty-four or thirty would be the most common. The reason that we would recommend thirty is just for ease, just for consistency, just to make it very consistent and clear regardless of the driveway width. Again, we don't have, the way our city is, we don't have a lot of really expansive, large lots with really long driveways anyway. But allowing someone at eight feet to be able to go out to that point, to the width of their garage, it seems like we don't gain a lot with that, with the narrowing for that first eight feet. And I also just want to note that we did reach out to the city engineer just to make sure that there isn't anything from their standpoint that, that this was designed for, that makes it easier for them. And they had nothing, they had no, they thought the ease, ease and just clear direction was the way to go also. And there was nothing from their standpoint that served them well, you know, with that initial narrowing for the longer driveways. So, so the only reasoning we can think of is that maybe it was done from an impervious surface standpoint. But again, because the tapers allowed at eight feet, there isn't a lot of difference on that. So staff would recommend the amendments as shown that the thirty feet would be the maximum width regardless of the length of the driveway. And I'll turn it back over to the commission.
Thank you, Carrie. Next item would be the public hearing. So let's open a public hearing at four-thirty-three PM. I will call three times if anybody wants to speak against a request. So for a first time, does anybody want to speak against that request to change the zoning code? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? And for a third and final time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? I'll call three times now. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? For a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? And for a third and final time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? Okay, we can close the public hearing at four-thirty-three PM. Commission, do you have any questions or comments? About city council members, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. What are your wishes?
I'd like a motion to amend chapter eleven teen zoning ordinance as indicated that staff has presented.
Thank you. I'll second that then. As we have a motion in a second, any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item ten, which is twenty-three dash zero 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 six-five-seven, City of Wisconsin Rapids. Action on a request for an amendment to the city's municipal code, chapter forty-six, sign code to clarify language for civic event banner requirements. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor Blazer and commission members. So this is a, I think, a kind of similar housekeeping. We, we don't clarify very well in our sign code that overhead banners are permitted and public right-of-way ground banners in the public right-of-way, both specifically. So the way it was worded previously was just without the language in blue. So this just helps clarify that event banners can be, can be over the public right-of-way and they can be displayed within the public right-of-way or in a public park, which is specifically permitted by and subject to other regulations. So it's just to make it clear that both, both can be done, basically. And I'll turn it back over to the commission.
Thank you. Commission, any questions?
I'm just wondering what the other regulations are. Just if anyone has a civic event, they can just place a banner in the right-of-way or what's the requirement?
So I believe those permits are issued maybe through the clerk's office. Is that right, Kyle? And it's for a specific length of time? And I'm not sure if that is, I'm not sure the length of time on that.
Yeah, I think it sounds right, ninety days. I think, so the difficulty here is that, you know, previously we've been doing overhead banners and it requires a streets crew an ample amount of time to erect those and take them down. And I think given the amount of, you know, acreage the city has where our signs are located as you enter the communities, would also serve a good location to put these up quicker, take them down quicker. You know, a lot of times streets will put them up and a week later, we get a windstorm or something and it's hanging down and it just looks tacky. So this is a way where, you know, we could maybe even construct some bases that have some removable poles and are right next to the city sign and might even capture motorist attention a little bit better than the overhead banners. And this clarifies the city's ability to do that. But again, as Carrie noted, there's still a process to go through the city clerk's office to get those approvals for those events.
So they'd only be approved in those certain places that are set up or?
Well, I think you could, you know, I think an organizer or an event could request alternate locations. I think there'd be a number of factors that'd be taken into consideration when looking at those other locations. I mean, historically, we've had a few locations for the overhead banners. And I think we'd look to duplicate a ground location at those same locations with this ordinance amendment.
Yeah, I know, just in the past, I think you would just see banners start popping up all over the place. And I think there was some confusion on if those were permitted or people could just place them anywhere. So I think just the permitting of it maybe, but if city's on board with it.
Yeah, and, and there's a, you know, there's, when it comes to sign code enforcement, you know, we do our best, but there are, there are a lot of people that will put up a temporary sign next to a stop sign that's in the right-of-way. Those are illegally placed and typically are removed in the field. Sometimes there are dozens that are collected over the course of, of an event. But on the flip side, a resident, if they want to support, you know, cultural fest or something, they can have one free speech sign that doesn't require a permit within their property as long as it's not over a certain size.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'll motion to approve the amendment to the city's municipal code, chapter forty-six, sign code to clarify language for civic event banner requirements.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Ben. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item eleven, conceptual project review, thirty-eight acre site north of Highway Z between Twelfth Street South and Sixteenth Street South. Town parcel ID zero seven zero zero nine one zero and zero seven zero zero nine one zero A. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. So the city, or I should say, our office in partnership with, with other offices, have pursued looking at some options for new development. There's some parcels, several forty-acre parcels that Water and Light own east of Eighth Street that historically have been wellhead protection areas. Our current zoning code permits the development of these sites if they're on sewered lots, sewered and, and water, right, sanitary lots. So we've taken an approach, a proactive approach to look at what we think is the most interesting parcel in terms of marketability and, and what would garner interest from developers. And that's this parcel that's shown here behind Walmart, just north of County Highway Z. Rather than, you know, starting to promote this parcel for development, I think it's most fitting to have a concept plan to help guide the development. Not only does it help guide any development, but it can be utilized to promote development to say, you know, the soils are, are well-suited here. There's no wellhead issues. There's no wetlands, that it's, you know, relatively flat, that it is served by appropriate utilities. And so again, having that kind of concept plan can be a tool for us as staff to promote the site and then ensure that adequate development occurs that recognizes the surrounding uses and that, you know, kind of is the highest and best use of the parcel. So what you have in front of you is staff's iteration of that concept plan. It's pretty brief. Again, the intent here is to, to just be a guide. It's not going to be an ordinance. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be something that's adopted, but is a guide that could be referenced in the event that a developer, let's say, wants to develop five, ten, twenty acres of the site. You know, if they came in and said, we want to do single-family directly adjacent to Walmart, you know, I think the thought as the city planner is, you know, that might, might be an incompatible use, right, to have single-family homes on the backside. So you can see with the projected, or I should say the concept plan, we've identified medium density and mixed uses that then transition into medium and low density as you move east. We've also recognized the existing road infrastructure and would probably like to see that carry forward. And then throughout the plan, we reference other plans such as the city's comprehensive plan as well as, you know, transportation and the Highway fifty-four bypass plan in the housing study and how they would relate to development within this area. So ultimately, at this point, you know, the concept plan is in draft form. We're looking to get your feedback on the plan and I think ultimately incorporate both plan commission, council and the public's feedback and create a final document that again, we can utilize moving forward when we're responding to development inquiries and to be able to promote the site.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions or comments?
Kyle, can you give us a little history on the fifty-four bypass and the struggles that have kind of ensued with that?
Yeah, I, you know, I can do my best. I think, you know, our city engineer has been the primary communicator with the DOT in regards to this project and previously led that, that planning document. Ultimately, from what I know though, this project is pretty much dead in the water in terms of assistance from the DOT. I don't think it is on their radar as a future plan for the foreseeable future. When I say foreseeable, you know, thinking about how a road project like this is planned, you know, ten to twenty years out in terms of acquisition, whether it be eminent domain or other type of acquisition that leads to the eventual construction. Most of the time, you're looking, you know, if you want to start that project, within ten years, you're looking at starting that acquisition and, and that planning. Nothing has really occurred to this point from the DOT standpoint since the creation of this plan by the city. And I don't think, given our, you know, the conversations we've had with the DOT, that, that again, they've earmarked this or placed this on their ra, radar for the foreseeable future. So I think it's, it's in our best interest to, you know, look at some of these areas, both this site. There's another hundred and twenty acres or so that Water and Light own for wellhead protection to the northeast. And I think, you know, it's in our best interest then to try to capitalize on these areas for development, to, you know, grow our tax base. Because historically, a lot of both the multifamily and single-family development has gone to our surrounding townships to the east because we haven't played a proactive role in, you know, developing.
Thank you, Kyle. I think this is a very well put together plan and I'm hopeful that we're going to see lots and lots of this stuff moving forward here in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, also Kyle and I have met with Water and Light and I want to thank them for their willingness to participate and seeing the benefits of maybe developing some of these parcels of land that, you know, where we have been limited by, by our boundaries on growth. So this creates some opportunities, which I think is good for the city.
I agree as well. A lot of the projects that we've been looking at and approval of, I just think of back to some of the housing projects and things like Mary's Place where we have troubles with housing in our community. And I think this is a very proactive approach to putting it out there to developers and, and provide this community the opportunity to lower housing costs by offering more. So I applaud the efforts by everybody that's been involved in this project so far, although it's a concept. I think we got to move forward proactively with some of this kind of stuff and, and put it out there.
Yeah, I think just anything that we can, the city can do to promote it, to, I think they'll get a return on their investment of anything that we can do. So that shovel-ready idea is, is good to have. You had talked about wellhead, so if anyone would develop a home there, would they not be allowed to have like a well for their sprinkler system?
You know, I think they probably could have a, have a well, I think with regards to septic systems. That's where the concern exists because this is an area identified for infiltration for our larger municipal wells. And they want to be able to preserve or maintain that, you know, quality of, of water.
Thank you.
Drinking water.
So do you need a motion, Kyle?
You know, I, I don't think it would hurt, just more so just acknowledging, you know, the plan and, you know, we're not necess, it's not an ordinance. But I think again, it, it almost acts like a policy. If there are changes, obviously we'll incorporate those changes, create a final draft. And then as staff, we will again utilize this plan as a guiding document. So I think it would be, it'd be appropriate for action.
What are your wishes? Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, if a may. Just, I just a question with this, or you mentioned the bypass that's there, or been there for quite a number of years. Would that still show up on the plan or would something like this remove that from the, possibly the, you know? Cause that bypass goes from there all the way to the compo site on fifty-four.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I think as the bypass pertains to this site, it cuts through the, the middle of the site. I think naturally this site will probably develop from west to east, just given the utility infrastructure that exists. So again, going from Twelfth Street over to Sixteenth Street. You know, I think as we think about that, that plan, I think we need to zoom out and look at, you know, that half-mile area from where fifty-four ends by the expressway there down to this site and where it would then continue westward. And I think the DOT has done just that and has identified that there are some pretty large land acquisitions to make that happen. I think we've also seen some residential developments and subdivisions pop up along what would be that right-of-way. And I think as we continue to move forward in the years past, we'll see more of that, that development will just infill along this area. And I think that's going to make it even harder or less of a desire for the DOT to participate in something like this. So I think, you know, while I think it's, it's valid to consider, you know, I don't know if there's a, a certain answer as to whether or not the council or the plan commission want to acknowledge that plan or not. You know, it's something that I think is a good point to bring up. I can certainly, before the council meeting, have some more details on the communication with our engineering department, the DOT communication to help us guide or make a decision on this document and, and future development along that corridor.
Tom, I think, are you referencing, I think, yes, I'm trying to remember, our official street map, maybe it's on there? And is that something that maybe we might have to update? street map, maybe it's on there and is that something that maybe we might have to update through our engineering, through the public works committee? I'm wondering if that's probably where it shows.
It shows somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Not to, you know, not talking against what you're talking about here, proposal, just that, that bypass has been there for a number of years or proposed. But it hasn't taken place. I think everybody knows that, that would come out right where the stoplights are there on fifty-four, by Home Depot.
Yeah, we've also.
I, I just wonder if that was gonna remain on there in the plan or going forward if, you know, if that would be, if the intent is to take that off of there.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's, as, as a planner, I think it's important to plan for that or at least the, the area that this would impact. You can recall as an alder that we, we generally discussed opportunities for single-family growth to the northeast and potentially looking at subdivision development. If we were to do that, I think we would set aside a couple hundred feet for this in the event that it were, it, it would happen. In talking to the city engineer further about this specific parcel, it's showing it transecting the forty acres, but it could likely also continue south at the intersection of Witrock and not impact these forty-acre parcels, continue south before it then, and have an interchange ultimately at Griffith before it moves westward. And I think that's a, an option if, if development happens on this parcel or parcels to the northeast, that perhaps it be rerouted and an inter- interchange further southwest occurs.
Thank you. What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion as Plan Commission supporting this conceptual plan and the developmental potential it has and wish staff to continue to pursue it and update us as it goes beyond the conceptual phase if it does.
Thank you, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a second by Mr. Austin. Is there any further discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. We're on to item twelve, which is adjournment. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.